All right, all right, all right, let me read our disclaimer. We'll go right into our general public comments in one second. Pursuant to Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2020-07 COVID-19 Executive Order Number Five, which suspends the requirements of the Illinois Open Meetings Act requiring in-person attendance by members of a public body during the duration of a gubernatorial disaster proclamation. The members of the village board will not be physically present for the designated board meeting, but will instead be participating in the meeting through audio access using a virtual meeting platform. Public comments may be submitted in advance of the meeting to village clerk D. Jones or by text message to 708-473-6201. All comments must be received by 5:00 p.m. the day before the meeting. In order to give proper consideration to all items on this agenda, the mayor will limit participants in the debate and will use close-off, protracted, repetitive, irrelevant, or abusive remarks. Public comments will be limited to a total of 30 minutes. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have general public comments? I didn't see we do because I saw the email.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. I received three public comments on yesterday. And I did send to the board the comments, but I will read them in the order I received them. The first one is from Donna Dealworth. And I received this at 10:04 a.m. on Monday, September 7th. And it reads, "Hello, Clerk Jones. Below is my public comment for Tuesday's board meeting. Thanks and enjoy your Labor Day. As a resident, I am discouraged to see the continuance, lack of communication, transparency, and strategic planning here in University Park. Mayor Rude, trustees Brooke, McMullin, Williams, Franklin, Jenkins, and Bolden should be advocates for making sure residents are being included in the conversations, documents are being provided timely. Make sure the village appearance and reputation is improving, and especially the village's financial stability. Support, support, and..."
And documents.
"...make sure documents are accessible and accurate. I do not hear not one board member asking for the zone meeting to be set up as a webinar the residents can be able to attend and ask questions, especially during discussion meetings. I expect and want to see more from each of you, not as humanitarians, but as leaders who research and are knowledgeable about each agenda item. So I can be reassured that you are voting with full understanding about the topic. All board members should support one another vocally and make sure residents are receiving their FOIA requests and other documents to help support transparency and answer residents' questions. Manager Beck Fulkin, I want to see and hear your strategic plan for the village over the next one in five years, along with how you've made this village better since you became village manager. This COW agenda is requesting for all types of equipment to be purchased from the $1 million impact fee received from Pitcher One, but part of that money should be allocated toward a salary for an in-house finance director, a HR director, and at least an assistant for each of those departments, along with bodies to drive those police cars and boom truck. That is where the village will see the biggest impact. A village manager will not be able to efficiently do their job if they are too occupied with focusing on other director-level duties. The first step in healing this village is to heal the home, then look at additional support systems like SmartGov LLC to help support the operating systems. If the village prioritizes and focuses on the basics, like enforcing ordinances, village beautification, and doing everything possible to complete and stand firm to a budget, then the village can begin to heal and be more attractive to new residents and businesses. Thank you, Donna Dealworth."
Anybody like to respond?
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Go ahead, Trustee Brooks.
Yeah, um, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees and general public, I normally don't say much during public comments because it's the time for residents to be heard, but I do know election season is coming up. And sometimes comments come into the board, and this is right about now. So, Madam Clerk, I'm just going to paraphrase some of the things that I had heard. Because if you listen to this, it sounds like the board is doing exactly nothing. I just would like the general public to understand that sometimes there may be disagreements on any board. There were disagreements on previous, before Mayor Rude and this board with Shirley Bolden. And trustee Franklin, trustee Jenkins-Bell came upon that we may have had disagreements, but we all came together, tried to move this village forward because I can tell you we're better than what we were when I first got on this board. We all addressing each other with respect. We don't argue, we don't do any of those things. And so to say that when it questions to the financial stability, supporting documents, and acquires, I just want for that statement to make it be clear that every trustee, I can say, they may not say it publicly, but every trustee does ask for documents. There has been documents the village manager has given. So let's get that correct. She has given documents. The clerk has given documents. It may not be exactly what you want, but the documents have been given. And if it's in reference to me, I can tell you right now that I gave you 425 pages for you to look at. So that's number one. Number two, when it comes down to saying humanitarian and full understanding of what we're talking about as a board, let me say, among the senior trustees, I will engage. The mayor would tell you that I have come to his office or spoken to him on the phone or in person that when it comes to anything that indeed I may speak first, but all of us as a board, we do have this discussion. So I don't know where that comment may come from. I may start first, but as always appears, trustee Franklin sometimes is last because his opinion, and that's just how it is with a board. The chemistry, usually he comes with the final word and that's it. And the board makes that decision of whatever we do collectively because we're one voice, one vote. The next one, I want a final one that I want to make very clear. When it comes to the impact fee, let's get an explanation here. Impact fee is just what it's for, an impact to what's going to happen for that development. So the $1 million can't go to a HR director and a finance director. In fact, something like that has to be budgeted. So I know that sometimes people have these dreams of how it should be when it's a board, but I'm here giving you a financial education of how it should be or how it is right now. And that is, we have to budget for that. In fact, we are budgeted for more policemen on the street. We are budgeted for firefighters. We are budgeted for DPW. What it is, is that when you have a company that's coming in, the impact fee is spent for the machinery that's going to be used, such as the boom truck, snow plows, as well as new police vehicles, and ambulances to go out and service that area and then come back to University Park to tend to you as a resident. So Mayor, I do yield my time. The only reason why I say that because it seems like it was an email that was full of criticism, but also at the same time, I think people get tied up into politics. We get to one side, to the other, it becomes clannish. And those type of emails come to the board, which, you know, some things, what I would call, that we need to start explaining as facts.
Well, thank you, trustee, and I just want to comment as well, just regarding this because there's going to come a time where we draw the line with that nonsense because unfortunately, some people can't get out of the rearview mirror. But that's such a small picture. The big picture is in the front windshield in which we're moving forward. So I would compliment every single member of this board of trustees because they don't ask a lot of questions at work because they do their due diligence and their homework because they're professionals and work in the industry of business. So this is a business meeting of the corporate body when we have these business meetings. And it's be no longer than a half an hour to 45 minutes, depending on the length of the agenda. But what we received from the developer is very uncustomary because it's unheard of in government. Developers do not front impact money to anybody. In my conversations with Mattison and Markham, they were wondering how were we able to get that? Because it was much needed and we were able to negotiate at a high level. So it's unheard of, first of all, to get impact fees from a developer. Secondly, when impact fees come in, they will basically come into the village in a different manner. But it's a whole different scenario. But stop spreading the nonsense. Let's stay on board. Let's move forward and let's get this village moving the way we should be because it makes no sense whatsoever for lies to carry more strength than the truth. It reminds me of my old days as a trustee when I was constantly told, "Well, you'll never beat me because you're too honest because these people here believe the lies before they believe the truth. So it's time to draw the line. Let's back up the truth with our documentations." And I'm not a one that talk a lot. Let's just be known by our actions and our works in this community. I'm sorry for going off, but it's time. Next, my next comment, Madam Clerk.
The second one comes from Deborah Taylor. It was sent Monday, September 7th at 2:16 p.m. And it reads, "I have several questions along with a few comments. Question one, please explain tonight the rationale for postponing the annual town meeting."
Okay, stop right there. I want to stop right there, please, Madam Clerk. Let me address it right now because I got short-term memory loss and I want to remember. It was a scheduling conflict and we want to ensure that we have all of our political officials there. First of all, it's a two-part town hall meeting, for the record. It's one part is to discuss Aquil. The second part is the municipal government of the village of University Park, our strategic plan, and moving forward. So, all right, that's all I wanted to say, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Did all trustees vote to reschedule that town hall meeting?
No, it wasn't a vote, Madam Clerk. It was a straw poll. And if we can't have the right components there with the engineers and their schedule to give the PowerPoint presentations and things that the residents need to see and be informed of, we definitely would have to push it back to accommodate everybody so we can have a full-blown-out agenda. And there should be no questions left after then. And prayerfully, if you decide to be a part of the problem, I mean, as part of the solution, moving forward or just leave it alone, that's it.
Okay, comment. This creates an atmosphere of suspicion. I do not request that the mayor, village manager... I do not request that the mayor, village manager, or trustees respond to my questions or comments tonight. I'm sorry. I do request that the mayor, village manager, and trustees respond to my questions and comments tonight. My questions do not require extended time for responses. Question two, what is the ending date for the village manager's contract? What date will the vote take place to determine the renewal termination of the contract? Has the village manager been evaluated and based on what criteria? How many times and by whom was she evaluated by an unbiased party? And who was the party? Is that evaluation available right now for public viewing? If not, this may be suspect. If it is available, please let me know how soon it can be reviewed. How about tomorrow? Question three, please clarify the role of the village attorney regarding the legal case trustee Brooks is currently pursuing. Has the village attorney filed any papers related to this case? If so, on whose behalf? And what was the cost of file the paperwork? What or his services regarding this particular case costing the taxpayer? What payment has been made to the attorney that is directly related to this case? Question four, trees. How long will residents have to wait for tree pickup from the last storm? There are huge trees that were damaged by the storm, many of which are located in forestry between the Dynasty Apartment and the townhomes of Russet Oaks. All of these questions can be answered tonight without hesitation or reservation. When you teach, when you learn, teach by Angelo, Deborah K. Taylor.
Can't hear you. You got your mute on.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you, trustee. Attorney Miller, would you like to respond on behalf of the law firm, please?
Listen, in regards to the litigation, there is ongoing litigation. I'm not going to respond in public. It's a matter, the legal bills are something that can be FOIA'd if they want to do that. The court costs in regards to that probably can be looked up online. She was asking about the filing fees. For our purposes, usually it's something, since we're doing responsive, the filing fees are at a minimum. But I'm not going to speak in regards to the litigation or the motions that may or may not have been filed at this time. If the board has questions, I can answer those questions at a closed session. But I don't think that's something for tonight's agenda, quite honestly. So at this time, I am not going to speak in regards to the ongoing litigation because that is not, pending litigation is not a matter that I would typically discuss with the public.
Thank you very much, Attorney Miller. Anybody else like to respond to Mrs. Taylor? If not, next question, Madam Clerk.
The next one is from Gina Williams. I received it September 7th at 4:43 p.m. And it reads, "I am not understanding how this administration continues to work without a budget. No finance meetings, no treasurer's report."
One second, one second, Madam Clerk, and I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's one of those moments. The treasurer's report has been filed and there are financing meetings. They'll be holding one next week, and there is a chair. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
No problem. But yet, a lot of reckless spending with no insight. How is it you can have a garage sale during a pandemic? A movie night to the tune of $11,000?
Stop right there, Madam Clerk. Stop right there. I'm sorry. The movie night was not $11,000. Again, stop putting that negative nonsense out in our community. We deserve better than that. The movie night cost $4,000. The additional $7,000 went to coal patching the community of University Park, all of its, some of its streets, and the town center, for the record. We're starting to reinvest in our own community, spending money getting our roads and streets repaired. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Okay, but no board meeting with residents present? Question mark, question mark, question mark. If you were able to sponsor a drive-in movie in the parking lot, why can't you do likewise for board meeting with residents? Churches hold service in the parking lot all the time, especially since the weather is pleasant? Simply no excuse for this, exclamation point. Also, are the trustees subject to a gag order or something of that nature? Perhaps a disclaimer where they can't speak or share information with residents? If so, who signed it? And are companies doing business with us subject to this as well? It was terrible hearing two residents had police called on them for asking a few questions to the Aquiline Company. It's not like we had a workshop where we could ask them our questions and concerns. This is the same garbage you pulled, Mr. Rude, when you had your puppet on the string. AVM, Johnna Townsend here. No cable, no committees, no bills payable. Everything was done in the dark. Well, it has come to the light. Please take the word transparency out of your vocabulary. Respectfully, Gina Williams.
Okay, awesome. Well, I think I got the record straight. Only $4,000 for the movie. In reality, once a park district is established, that's equipment that we should actually own from a park and recreation or a park district perspective because most communities do give back to the residents. Most communities do have volunteers who work as it was their regular job, providing activities for communities. So it's fine and dandy, Mrs. Williams. And I don't know anything about acting village manager Johnna Townsend to constantly keep looking in the rearview mirror. Ms. Williams, I'm sorry that you are offended in any way or mannerism in which we're operating, but we're operating in truth, trust, and transparency. And transparency in government actually becomes when you have open meetings, you have town hall meetings, you have community forums, you have an open-door policy. You've never asked to come and sit down with the mayor or just to talk and find out anything was going on. It's always throwing slanderous, deflamatory comments out there. And just come on, sit down with us. And if you want to sit down with a trustee, on the record, I'm quite sure they'll be wanting to sit down with you. But there's nothing to hide. We're doing business. And sometimes it appears that for so long, you can be doing things the wrong way and it appears to you that it's the right thing. But finally, when there's a break and there's some, a new administration, a new change, an opportunity to do things differently, think outside the box, be innovative and creative, there happens to be a challenge. But we're no, we're clean, we're good, and we're doing a fantastic job in the conditions that we were dealt walking in the door. We're doing a fantastic jobs. It appears that only a handful think otherwise. I'm finished with those comments, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Trustee Williams, absolutely.
Okay, in the mows of this committee, and I have been asked over and over again, who put up the $4,000 for us to have this movie?
Oh, who put it up? Oh, it's in their budget, trustee Williams. And to be honest with you, let me explain something.
Asking, is that in the mows somebody's budget?
Yes, yes. It's in the mows. It's in a separate fund set aside for special events and activities for the municipality. Yes, trustee.
That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. All right, that is from the public comments. Let's move on to the agenda. Okay, business discussion items. Okay, here's our presentation, Mrs. Neva. Let's bring in Greg Anderson and SmartGov. He promised this would be to the point. And I'll tell my board of trustees, Mr. Anderson and SmartGov was referred to me by the mayor of Hazelcrest, Mr. Alsberry, and he says, "Give them a look. It can't hurt anything. This is the way the government is operating and moving forward." So let's hear what they have to offer.
All right, they're here. They are. We have audio in for two. We have a video, Mr. Cyril. Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
You are. Thank you. How you all doing?
Good. He's in, and Greg Anderson is on his way. I'll let him in.
Bless you.
And I'm going to, want me to give you control of the thing, right?
Yeah, Greg will have the PowerPoint, so he'll need control over it. But he should be able to share, I think.
Okay. Hold on one second.
Okay. How you all doing tonight?
All right.
Good, good.
Thank you for asking.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, yes, well, Mayor Alsberry spoke very highly of you and your program. So anything that can help us in technology move the village far, I definitely have an ear for.
Great, great, great to hear that.
Okay, he's not quite there yet. It's working.
Okay.
So this is the way the future in government is going, huh? A different way to deliver the services to the residents, huh?
Yeah, you know what, and Greg will speak to a little bit, a little more to it. But you know, this is something that's been in development for a few years. So even before COVID hit, you know, it's all about efficiency. So trying to figure out the best way to get services to allow people to be able to connect to the services they need, allow businesses different ways to connect with customers or potential customers. So we kind of wanted to make a one-stop shop where people can access all of those things. And then when COVID hit, it became even more important to be able to do those things without having to go to an office, without having to do certain things. So it was a situation where we said, "Well, now it's really important to kind of get this out and continue to build it." So you know, the company, and Greg started the company a few years ago, and I'll let him tell kind of his story on why he started. He has a personal reason on why. But you know, it was really to give people, we have a couple of different apps that we've built. And so the My Village app, which we'll go into today specifically to, you know, that village, right? And to the needs of that village and the services that those people need. We have a couple of other apps that were also in the same vein of just giving people the opportunity to access the things they need without having to spend hours in, you know, a state office or whatever it might be.
Madam Clerk, excuse me, one minute. The clerk has a hand up.
If I could just get your, the correct spelling of your name, sir.
Sure, it is C-Y-R-I-L. Last name Smith.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Mr. Anderson has made it in the meeting. I'm going up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, how are you?
We're fine, sir. How are you?
I'm answering for you.
I'm okay, I'm okay. And thank you, thank you for the opportunity for just taking out time in your busy schedule and allowing us to do the presentation and the demonstration of the My Village app. I just have one quick question before we get into the presentation. Will we have the ability to share the screen so we can give you a full demonstration of the app?
Yes, Mr. Anderson, when you're ready, I will turn, I'm going to turn it over now to you to make you the host. But then when your presentation is over, I will exit you from the...
That's perfect. Thank you.
You're good to go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay, everybody can hear me and they can see my screen.
Yeah.
Okay, 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 perfect. So first, let us again start off by saying thank you, Mayor Rude and the village trustees for taking time out of your schedule and allowing us to do this presentation. We just want to give you a brief introduction of who we are. My name is Greg Anderson, president of SmartGov LLC. I have five and a half years of experience at the state of Illinois. And while employed, I created call savings plans, production reports, and health and safety plans. So a few years ago, Cyril and I decided to start SmartGov LLC to offer technology solutions with two goals, either to save money or generate revenue for local, state, and federal agencies. As Cyril was explaining before I got on the call, we have several products that will be launched as of December 1st, which includes a digital health app called the Smart App, which is currently being evaluated by the federal government for grant funding. And we're also in discussions with U.S. Senator Dick Durbin for approval concept apps for Cook County. I'll turn it over into the hands of Cyril Smith so he can introduce himself.
Yeah, sure, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, perfect, all right, great, thank you, thank you. So just a little bit on me, so I'm currently in Georgia, but I actually grew up in Mattson. I lived in University Park for a few years as well. So definitely, I have some family, extended family that's been there forever. So University Park is kind of like a home away from home for me. So you know, I'm happy to see some faces from UP, so it's good to talk to you. I've also worked as in a marketing agency for seven plus years and then more recently on the customer success side. So with implementation and training in regards to a digital learning. So I work for a company now as well where we focus on digital learning for students, but I'm all about the customer success side. So making sure that people get the most out of a digital experience is what I focus on. So training with teachers and students and administrators and then just making sure they can get as much as they can out of that digital experience. So I bring that to the Smart Gov side and really trying to really make sure people can understand the importance of it, the effectiveness of it, and then can use it the best way possible.
Okay.
So the first thing is just our disclaimer, you know, all this information is proprietary, so we would definitely appreciate it if you all would keep what we go through and kind of what we speak to today between us. You know, we want to make sure we keep all that proprietary information between you, we want to make sure you get it. But outside of that, we want to make sure nobody else does. So we want to make sure we have that disclaimer to you. All right, so just kind of looking at Smart Gov, and Greg spoke to this a little bit, where he talked about some of the mobile apps. So we really build out different services on the government side. So whether it be state, local, and federal agencies, making sure we can build websites, the apps, web portals, customized technology solutions. So keep in mind, everything that we go through today, and I'll give you a brief overview numbers, and then Greg will go live into like a demo of the app, of what will be available. Everything is customizable. So the main things is always to make sure that what we're doing is most appropriate for that customer. So whatever the village needs, whatever they think their residents need, we want to make sure that that's the information that will be available. So everything is customizable. We do also focusing on working with nonprofit organizations, and we talked about local and those government agencies. So the benefits we're looking at here, so looking on the resident side, we want to make sure that they have those connections to those websites for the village. So we got the village website, we have the different portals within it. We want to make sure they can click into and find exactly what they're looking for right from the app. So the main thing with the My Village app is it's going to be a one stop shop, right? So they can go there to find employment opportunities, they can go there to fill out applications, they can go there to do a lot of different things. And we know, of course, with smartphone usage and with, you know, everybody has a phone in their hands at all time. We want to make sure that we built something that's effective for them to reach out and get the things that they need. They could also get a lot of village info, there's news, there's a lot that will be available right within the app. Then, of course, a local business directory, which then now goes to the business side. Businesses would be able to advertise directly to potential customers. They'll be able to do some networking on the app as well. We want to make sure the business has have the opportunity to find the customers that might be looking for them. So we want to make that connection as well between the customer and the businesses. And then just some quick numbers here, these are numbers that you all already know, but we just want to kind of go over really quickly, of course, looking at, we have the population, we have the demographics. One thing to point out is going to be the total businesses there. So we have six seventeen, and that's the most recent numbers, so you know, obviously, that's going to be different.
Two thousand twelve, yeah, yeah, that's different.
Yeah, yeah, so it's going to be vastly different from what that number is there. But that was the, so we did some of the projections off of that, but obviously, we can just, you know, go off of what the most recent numbers are. But that was the most recent that we could find, was that six seventeen. So just keeping that in mind as we're looking at, you know, how many businesses we can help, how many businesses we can help them build and grow. And you know, with COVID, it's been, it's been really tough on small, medium sized businesses. So any way we can kind of help them connect with citizens and residents and people who might be customers to them, we want to make sure we can do that as well. So then, looking at the mobile app itself, so on the homepage, you'll have things like the social media for the village, latest news, events, any forms, applications will be a direct link to those. If they want to file for permits, any resident responsibilities, all that information, we want to have available right there on the homepage. Keep in mind, you know, if there are things that you feel that will be even more important to be right there front and center, we can always, of course, customize it and add those in. But this is how that homepage will look, and then there'll be a village tab, which will then have all of the village information, all the mayor information, the village officials, staff, any senior activities. So all the information that you'll find on the website will have that right there in the tab, where they can click that and it'll be readily available for them. And then, of course, industries wise, we want to cover the whole gamut of all the businesses that are available within the village. And this is kind of gives you an idea of everything that might be there. But any business in any industry want to make sure there's going to be a tab for it. We'll make sure that they can find it, there'll be a search bar, for instance. If they want to find childcare, they'll be right within the app, be able to type in childcare, and then the map will actually locate the closest childcare and have all that information for the business, the profile of the business. But we want to make sure that all the industries are covered, but then it's very easy for the residents to find those different businesses in those industries. And of course, you have the community organizations. So everything that a resident might need, we want to make sure they can click into, find it, map it out, and find the direct info for that organization or for that business. And then just some of the additional features, you can always, you know, they can turn on a push notification. So then, if there's village info and they want that type of notification, that alert, they can turn that on, so they'll get that alert right to their phone. For any community jobs, we're going to have, you know, a job board built out for them so they can go there, they can find jobs that might be suited to their skill set, apply for them right there. We'll give the opportunity for businesses to sponsor. So you know, they'll be able to pay something, and then they'll be actually become, you know, if we decide they want to do that, they can market themselves even further than, other than just their profile. So we have to do that through sponsorships. We talked about the map, where they're going to have that advanced industry map. So they'll be able to not only locate the businesses, but then we'll have a color coded map for specific types of businesses as well. They'll be able to quickly find what it is they're looking for. And then for any home based and online businesses, we are, we want to create kind of a tab for them as well. We know there are a lot of companies that are small businesses or we just starting out and they're doing online things. We want to make sure that if they're a business that's in the village, you know, that they're going to be able to be found. So we want to make sure these home based and online businesses, if they're out of the village, they can profile themselves there as well. So we want to make sure we cover the whole gamut so that everyone gets a chance to market themselves, gets a chance to get their business out there. All right, and so now I'm going to turn it over to Greg, and then Greg's going to actually demo the app and kind of show you some of the features within the app itself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and please excuse all of these apps and that are on my phone. Okay, so let's start with the demonstration. Now, this is, what I'm going to show you is the demonstration for the My Village app that I created, that we created for Hazelcrest. So it will not have any University Park information within the app, but this is just the demo, so you'll see exactly how the app flows and exactly all of the functionalities and features on the app. Okay, so on the home screen, as Cyril explained, there will be an icon for social media, so you can find information on Facebook as well as Twitter. Okay, residents can also find the latest news in the village. All that a touch of a button. Residents can stay abreast to the different events that are going on each month in the village. I'll come back to this business of the month, the partner of the month, I'll come back to that later in the presentation. Users will have the ability to share the app to other residents or people that may want to register as a business and/or as a resident to find the business directory as well as information in the village. Residents will have, also have the ability to make payments online, water bills. You can create an account or you can make a one time payment. And I believe University Park has that same feature as well. Users will have the ability to find different forms and applications. And users will have the ability to find different permit information within the village. And as we stated before, these apps are going to be totally customizable according to the needs of the village. So this is the homepage tab, next tab we're going to is the village tab. It will have information about the mayor. This is not you, Mayor Rudess, but just imagine, close your eyes and imagine yourself on the app.
Yeah, I know that guy.
Okay, okay, so we'll have, we'll also have information on village officials. So we can let the residents know who the trustees are. Okay, we'll also have information on village staff, business manager, any other titles that you want to display on the app. We have senior activities. Public works. And so residents can find information on snow plowings, tree removal, et cetera. Transportation. So the transportation tells about the different bus lines and train lines that, and the different times of service that residents can get in and out of the city. We also have a residence responsibilities tab. The different expectations for people that move into the village.
That's a good one.
Okay. Frequently asked questions, city sticker information, permits, hot water, who do I call, water leaks. And we're also going to have village information, which will include the logo, the name of the village, the address, contact information, hours of operation, as well as a contact person. A contact person, your, and one more thing. Contact person as well as the website. I'm sorry about that. So we'll have the web, the full website on this page. Okay, so the next, so the next page we're going to go to is the businesses tab. And this is where you're going to generate your account from. So we're going to have a list of different businesses and different industries. On the demo app, I only put twelve of the industries. We're going to have anywhere between twenty, twenty and twenty-five industries. So this is sort of what the app will look like. So for automotive, you'll be able to find car washes, mechanics, tow trucks. For beauty and hair, you'll be able to find salons, barber shops, nail salons, beauty supply stores, et cetera. So let's go to Hazelcrest. And my dad is the owner of Cliff's Barber Shop, so of course I had to include their information in the app. But so what we'll do is, there'll be a map function on here. The map will be scaled to University Park, so you'll see a bunch of dots all around for all of the barber shops that are there. But we're going to give you all a customized map that I'll show you an example of what it would look like. So if you push on the button, you'll be able to show details, it has the address, contact information, and hours of operation. But on the full details page, it will also include the logo, telephone number, hours of operation, their social media, a business description, as well as a map at the bottom that shows where the business is in relation to the cross streets in University Park. Okay, users will also have the ability to get directions to whatever business they're trying to find. Okay, so I'm just going to go through a couple of more of these tabs, cleaning services. So we'll have commercial, residential, we have nannies, construction, you have general contractors, electricians, HVAC plumbers. They can all register on the app. Childcare, daycare centers, adult daycare centers, nannies. You can also include, you can include just about every title that goes under child or adult care. Fashion, accessories, boutiques, stores that specialize in footwear, handbags, men and women clothing, banks, ATMs, fitness, if you have any gyms, if you have any personal trainers that want to register to advertise on the app, this will be the spot. We have freelance, so we have artists, authors, entertainment, musicians, photographers. You may have a drum player, a drum player that's looking for work. And you may have a church that needs a new drummer. This will be the perfect opportunity for that networking opportunity. Okay, you have grocery stores, lawn care, so landscaping, lawn cutting, tree removal. Professional services will include accountants, attorneys, consultants, credit repair, financial advisors, insurance agents, as well as real estate agents and brokers. We'll also include restaurants, and we will, we will separate the restaurants based on the type of food that they sell. So let's just do an example. So if you go to Los Angeles Restaurants in Hazelcrest, it has their address, contact information, website, hours of operation. As I stated before, it will include their social media as well as a business description and a small map at the bottom of the page. And just remember, if you need to, need directions, you can just type on the, select the hyperlink, it will give you directions to that, to that business. Okay, transportation and web design. So like I said, these are just a few of the industries that we're going to include. The final version will have twenty to twenty-five different industries. We also have a communities tab or a not for profit tab where users can find churches. So the churches will include the address, contact information, website, email address, the pastor, if they're doing live stream services, their hours of service and hours of live stream, as well as a small map at the bottom. Okay, we'll also have any community service organizations that are in the village of University Park. We'll have an education tab where residents can find tutors or distance learning programs, things of that nature. We have a healthcare tab where chiropractors, dentists, primary care physicians, or pharmacies, they can register to advertise on the app as well. And last but not least, we'll have schools, where all of the schools that are in the village, their information will be listed in the app as well. And just remember, this is totally customizable, so we're going to include parks. There may be about four or five different icons that we're going to add on this page, but we're just trying to give you an example of what it will look like. And the last page will be the memberships tab. And I'll go into this in greater detail after I finish doing the demonstration. There will be three different memberships. The first membership level will be the silver. Uh, that will be for ten dollars per month. Uh, business owners will uh have the ability to have three updates per year uh where they'll be able to advertise on the app with their business name, their address, phone number, hours of operation, website, social media, logo, contact person, email, as well as a business description. There's also a gold uh level, which is fifteen dollars per month. Users have six updates per year. They'll they'll receive all of the same benefits at of the silver, but they'll also have the ability to uh indicate if they have job openings or any special offers. So let's say you're uh there's a JJ's Chicken and Fish, and they have a lunch special. Six wings, fries, and a pot for five ninety-nine. You can put, you can post that on the app. And the last membership level is the platinum. Uh, the platinum uh is twenty dollars per month. There are twelve updates per year. You get the same benefits as the silver and the gold. Uh, but the difference with this is you have the opportunity to be the business of the month as a as a platinum member. The uh business of the month, each month, the uh the mayor and the trustees will select uh ten to twelve businesses uh that are that are uh uh participating within the community, we'll put them on the homepage. And then I have some of the highlights and some of their service areas, contact person. We can also do a business profile uh of the of the business owner. Uh, we we can be really flexible on this page, but we just want to give those that are paying the most money to the village to advertise on the app uh prime real estate on the app, on the homepage. Okay, and last but not least, uh so the way that this will work is in the event that someone says, hey, I want to sign up for the app, this is something that I'm interested in. Uh, they can just go to our contact us page. You know, selected My Village App. They'll enter all their information, business name, address, phone, hours, website, social media, contact person, a business description, uh any job openings they may have, and they can also upload a logo and submit the form. I'll receive the information, you all collect the money. How does that sound?
Great.
Okay. Okay, so. Okay, so let me get back to the
May screen. Okay.
Okay, uh before I get in uh back into the presentation, did you all have any uh brief questions, comments, concerns?
I I have a trustee Williams here.
Okay, how you doing, Mr. Trustee Williams?
Okay, you said uh we, you said they pay? Who who answered?
Okay, I I okay, that that question is going to be uh answered uh just a little further on in the presentation. But uh businesses uh within the community, they will pay to have their information posted on the app. That will be available to all of the residents. They will pay the village. They they will pay the village the money to advertise on that.
Okay, so how do you all get paid?
Uh, we'll we'll get into, we'll get into that in a few more slides.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Williams, uh when I need a lawyer, I'm calling you, trustee Williams. Okay. Okay, so let's uh just
Taking business from me.
All right.
Let's keep him, let's keep, let's keep it moving. The board is, has, has logged it. Let's keep it moving.
Okay, uh functionality comparison. There are other uh villages that have uh apps. Uh, this is the, this is the extent of their mobile apps. Hazelcrest has the app, Cal City has an app. Uh, it basically just gives calendar, uh calendar information, officials, the website, questions, contact us, the news. Uh, but uh in comparison to the functionality of the My Village App, uh we give all of that information, but we also offer online payments, University Park Business Directory. Uh, it's going to generate revenue. Uh, you're going to promote local businesses and uh we'll also add a job board. We we're going to deliver on time. As you, as you can see with the demonstration of the demo app, uh the design and the flow of the app is very user-friendly, and we make constant updates. Okay, there will be the three levels. There will be the silver, gold, and the platinum. Uh, this will be an example of what a sample details page will be like. So there will be the logo, uh the company snapshot with the uh business description with the business name, address, uh telephone number, hours of operation, website, social media, contact person, email address, as well as the map at the bottom of the page. Okay, so these are the membership levels that the uh the businesses in University Park uh will pay to promote on the app every month. Uh, so there is a silver level, which will be the ten dollars a month or a hundred and twenty dollars a year where they get the three updates. There's a gold level where that's fifteen dollars a month or a hundred and eighty dollars per year with six updates. And there's a platinum level, which is twenty dollars per month or two hundred and forty dollars a year, and they get twelve updates per year. So we'll go, uh we'll briefly go into the uh projections based off of the six hundred and seventeen businesses uh that were registered in twenty twelve. As we stated, we don't have any of the uh uh the most recent information. Uh, so we did participation uh levels based off of thirty percent of the businesses, forty percent of the businesses, and fifty percent of the businesses advertised in on the My Village App. If one hundred and eighty-five uh uh businesses registered on the app, that will yield about thirty-three thousand uh dollars for the uni for University Park at these different uh cost levels, silver one twenty, gold one eighty, and platinum two forty. If we get uh forty percent of the businesses to register, which is about two hundred and fifty businesses, uh that will yield uh just under forty-five thousand dollars in revenue for the village of uh University Park. And if we can get half of the b- businesses to register on the app, uh that will yield uh just over uh just over fifty-six thousand dollars in revenue. Okay, and trustee Williams, this is going to a- answer your question. Uh, the My Village App, uh the app will be available on iPhones as well as Android devices. Uh, the term price is is two thousand dollars, and that's a one-time initial setup fee to set up the app on Android as well as uh iPhones. And then there will be four thousand dollar development fee. Uh, uh that will include development, service, uh license, licensing fee, uh and that will be for a twelve-month period. So the total cost of the app is six thousand dollars. Uh, that's that includes the annual license plus the one-time setup fee. Uh, that six thousand includes maintenance uh with the server. But we also have one additional charge with the backend services. We're going to charge only one dollar per business per month uh that are registered on the app. So in the event that you have, because we're constantly going to be uh constantly going to be making updates to to the app throughout the year. Um, so let's say you have two hundred businesses registered, uh two hundred businesses registered. Uh, so the village will send us a check for two hundred dollars. But if you're paying just two hundred dollars, that means, based on the projections, that means you're receiving about uh thirty-five, thirty-five to thirty-eight hundred a month in revenue. Okay, we have uh payment terms, uh the prediction of the app. Go ahead. Does someone have a question?
No, I guess not. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, okay, so the payment terms uh for the My Village App uh customized is going to take about sixty days. Uh, so the initial setup fee is uh uh is due upon signing the contract. That's the two thousand dollars. Within those twenty days, I'll work with the village so so we can get the nine to twelve different icons and websites and links that we want to add add on the page. Uh, phase two of the app will be integrating the data and the maps, coding, testing. We'll get final approval of the design, and all of that will take place within thirty days. That will also give you enough time to contact the different businesses that are in your village and uh let them know, hey, we have a new uh, we have a new product uh where we want to uh advertise to uh directly to residents in the community. Are you interested? And phase three uh would be sync, the sync process, storing the data, the so uh servers, preparing the servers, uh and then making the event, making the app available on Google Play as well as the App Store. That's going to take about ten days. And uh and that's when the final two thousand is due. Uh, on the phase two and phase three, uh they're net net fifteen. And then the month, the monthly maintenance, which is the one dollar per business, uh that doesn't start until thirty days after the launch of the app. And those payments are net fifteen as well. Okay, and that concludes our uh presentation. Uh, as again, I'm Greg Anderson. This is Cyril, uh Cyril Smith is on the line, the executive vice president. Uh, did you all have any questions or concerns?
Well, 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 Greg and Cyril, thank you for giving us the opportunity to see your presentation and uh if there's any questions, the floor is open to ask any questions. If not, we'll move on.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Um, so when I think about the mental health tab and the ability to pro- provide information to the residents um about mental health, uh suicide, child abuse, domestic abuse, would it be an opportunity to waive those fees for uh organizations or would 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 it be an expectation that uh mental health facilities or suicide assistance hotlines and different things pay a fee um to provide that information to the residents?
Uh, we we can waive anything. Like I said, this is totally customizable, so uh if you wanted to waive the fees for like churches as well as mental health, uh that's that's totally up to the village.
All right, thank you.
Okay. But but keep in mind, but keep in mind, trustee, that was a great, that was a, that was a great question because those are some of the different features that we can add in the mental health uh in the mental health icon, suicide prevention, and all of those things can be added within the app as well.
Okay, understood. So um thank, thank you all for taking the time to present. I think this 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 app will kind of help address our issue for uh communication, which is always a struggle in our community, so.
That's our struggle.
Always uh something that we're trying to look for um ways to address. So thank you all for taking the time out to present today.
Okay, and uh thank you. And is there a uh a timeframe or where we can expect a follow-up?
Well, would you, go ahead, go ahead, trustee Brooks.
Yeah, uh, just a quick question on businesses. Um, most of our businesses are in industrial park. They're you know, an industrial uh form of uh businesses. How would that benefit uh outside our our commercial in the residence? How uh I could say with us being the largest and, you know, industrial park here in the south suburb, how would that benefit on the app if you can in some way?
Well, that would be a great opportunity uh for them to post job openings, so they can find residents within the community uh to fill those positions. So that is one way that they can benefit from posting their information either as a sponsor or on the businesses tab.
Okay, because uh the the unemployment rate for University Park, um it it's not high, but uh other than that, I mean, uh with the advertisement, would it uh anyway uh benefit when it come to residents as far as uh uh how can I say, communication with the company? Because of what I guess would, because the numbers you're showing me, uh I just, just a little concerned with the businesses that are out there in industrial park that may feel like they don't need to get involved uh because a lot of them say that they do uh advertise for employment, but we don't come that direction uh is i- is is a village. Uh, so I'm just at, you know, just wondering, you know, how how would it help us a little bit to um dealing with that situation out there?
Yes. Okay, well, dealing with that situation, if uh this app, this app is is basically a mobile newsletter. So if you can get the word out about the app and have the uh residents to download the app, you you'll have more people that are a- aware of the job openings. Maybe they're having a problem with connecting with the community is because people don't know those jobs exist. But if you have a job board that uh that's on the homepage of the app, and they say, hey, we're looking for forklift drivers. We're looking for uh uh, we're looking for receptionists, and people in the uh community know that those jobs are available. That's a, that's uh A, it's easier to hire somebody within the community because you won't have all of those issues with transportation, getting back and forth to work. Uh, and B, it it'll just kind of boost morale within the community when someone uh lives, what works where they live.
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, thank, thank you, because uh yes, that is a good point. I think um uh Rein Reinhardt Food, I want to say that was our, when when that business was out there, uh I would say that indeed we had a lot of people that lived here that worked out there. And it just seemed, yeah, after they left, you know, um just kind of uh seemed like a lot of the workforce in University Park did not make that trip to industrial park to see what jobs are available. And so I guess now this would be the perfect opportunity. Um, and hopefully this is the connection that can be used to uh keep the residents informed of what job openings are out there um uh in industrial parks. Like I said, majority of it is there. And then two, uh I think on the commercial side here closer in town, uh it would be i- is as we steady bring uh food, uh what's what's our restaurant here, uh mayor?
The Sugar Shack and
Sugar Shack, yeah.
Okay, and 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 J and J, we, our retail side is is hasn't caught up with our commercial side yet, but they're in the race now.
Yeah, yeah, I think this probably would would benefit if uh people seen that, yeah, Sugar Shack is open. I'm be honest, I don't think people know Sugar Shack is open. Uh, it should be, it should be very crowded, because when it was Johnny's, it stayed full. So uh, yeah, this, you know, I I think that's a good thing. Thank you for, that was a good answer that you gave me. May I yield my time?
All right, any anybody else, anybody else on the board, from the board have any questions? Mister Anderson, again, Cyril, thank you guys for the presentation, and uh I'll let you know what the board decides moving forward, all right?
Okay, thanks a lot, sir.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, stay safe, guys.
You too. All right, take care.
You are.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, you uh don't forget to turn the host back over to me, please.
All right, a little little longer than I anticipated. Thank you for your patience, guys.
Oh, and we have everybody. I'm just working on trustee Williams. I'm, uh, everything's good.
So we have everybody?
Yep, everybody that was on the original who was here prior to the to the presentation is all here.
Okay, all right, so Madam Clerk, can I call this meeting back to order and do a roll call to keep my moving?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this meeting is now called, this meeting is now called back to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Trustee Williams.
She's coming.
He's come. Trustee Brooks, he's here.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee McMullin, still absent. Mayor Rudy, it's now eight twenty, eight twenty-seven.
Okay.
You didn't call trustee Bolden.
I'm sorry, trustee Bolden. I just checked you in.
You guys are hilarious. All right, I, I, item five A two, this is the discussion of Pro Champs. I just, we had a presentation. Does anybody have any comments? Uh, I know there was a trustee that had some concerns.
Well, can I just ask my question to uh?
Yeah, go, go, go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead trustee Brooks, go ahead.
Yeah, Miller, did you, did you get a chance to look at the uh, details of the uh, the language of uh, the contract? And, and if, uh, if, if uh, not, I'm sure it's something, I'm, I'm looking here. It's almost like exactly, exactly everything he said. It was just a couple of technicalities.
Yeah.
If, if it's an issue.
And I wanna make sure, cuz there was a, there was a bunch of contracts. I'm going, cuz I went through a lot of things for the, the meeting. And I saw nothing that I was like overly, like very minor changes. What I would say, if you guys are inclined, inclined to uh, adopt it, just uh, do an approval subject to final attorney changes. Cuz there was like a couple of, I don't wanna say they were typos, but for lack of a better word, it was a couple of typos in the one. If it's the one contract I'm thinking of, cuz there's, I'm trying to find it right now cuz I'm, the bad thing is when I'm at home, I have everything spread out, so.
So, so, so I am correct. I was, cuz I seen uh, like page one is like the ordinance, but then it goes into like contract. So yeah, we, so probably if it's anything that uh, I can um, email you, oh, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
I just wanted to say, what you see in the packet is a draft, a sample draft ordinance that was sent to us from Pro Champ. This is not our.
This is not our language, right?
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Their language, so.
Our attorney will give us the strength, right, Madam Clerk?
Right, he said the board decided how they wanted to move forward or not. Then he could draft our ordinance based on the board's wish.
And, 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 and make sure that the village is squared away. That's what counts.
Right.
Okay, so Mayor, we, we uh, the price that I see.
Stand still on the screen.
Okay, okay, I'm at, okay, trustee Williams.
Hello?
Yes.
I hear everybody, but I'm at a standstill.
We can see you though.
Hear you.
And hear you.
I'm not moving or nothing.
But, but we, we see, we see and hear you.
Yeah.
I don't see you all.
Switch to active speakers, whatever.
Yeah, or, or, or start video.
Right.
But you're very active.
Yeah.
Trustee Williams, if you stay right there and connected, we can see and hear you to vote or anything. So I'mma work, keep working on it, see if I can go through some controls, but we can see and hear you.
Okay, Mayor, you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, or you know, uh, uh, if I'm not mistaken, um, uh, the prices is, would we have to, um, should that be a board decision of how much we charge? I know he, I know I see on one here like uh, the, let me dig here. It's, it's down in the contract, uh, but it's like in that first one, like uh, one twenty-five per building, uh, ten days expiration. But then I also see uh, on one where it's like a three hundred annual registration. Should now, is that the part where we should dictate the pricing of how we wanna do this? But I mean, I see, yeah.
Yeah, yes and no. So, I mean, in regard to, yes, you can, it's a negotiable document. So we can always go to them and say, hey, we want it to be this amount of money. This is their proposal in regards to the cost. So if there's a concern that the costs are too high or too low, um, we can absolutely um, require and, and, and say, hey, we want it to be at this level. I mean, it's all a negotiable document cuz I see where you're talking about in regards to the rental. It's a one twenty-five per building, but then for the vacant owner, it's three hundred, or the foreclosure, it's three hundred. I think that's what you're referring to right now.
Yeah, yes, yes, correct, yeah, okay, um.
That's on the back page, yeah.
Yeah.
It's the last one, it's the exhibit of the document, sorry, for those who are.
Yeah, if we could, yeah, if we can um, uh, discuss the price. I heard the mayor said another trustee has an issue, so I would rather, I wanna hear what they have. But as far as me, Mayor, and uh, board, um, um, I, I kinda wanna go with Attorney Miller's recommendation that we kinda go through it and uh, go with how much is too much? We need to, we need to keep uh, here, here's my perspective. Like I got, I got three vacant houses in front of me.
Try to put some off of the charges.
Some, somebody talking, some, at some point, you know, I feel that the bank, they're, they're just letting the house sit there. And then actually, some of you even may know, two, two, one was a coach. He was a coach right here in uh, uh, next door. He, he, he left for Las Vegas. Uh, his house is sitting there, uh, the house across the street, you know, they just leave. And the house is just sitting there. So at some point, when it comes to something, uh, where one was a foreclosure and one, well, I think both of them may be foreclosure, but when someone walks away, the biggest problem I have is kids and the fact that grass getting taller. I'm sure every resident somewhere in town uh, is experiencing that. But if the bank is gonna let a house sit like that, I wanna make sure that, hey, you need to pay a price because at some point, I know in the past, we used to try, or I guess we used to have people cut the grass or, or I don't know if lawn dogs did it this year. I don't know if they did it this year, but we have people cutting the grass. But we have to start making these banks feel the pain of the residents because at the, at the end of the day, a lot of us is a homeowner here and we're about tired of these houses popping up vacant. Or we have these houses too. Let me say this, people are renting uh, uh, these houses, section eight, and they're being totally neglected of, of, of the tenants that are there. And we have to do, make it where it's a wake-up call that University Park, we're not here to make money, but we here to say, this is your intention. If you wanna buy a house, leave, then turn around and rent it out to section eight, which seems to be one of the intentions of the gentleman across the street. When he told me that he bought my neighbor's house, he was just trying to do the final paperwork. I mean, not to be malicious, but hey, if, you know, if you're gonna be renting out that to, as a section eight house, then, you know, we need to make it where there, cuz we know they get a hefty money for being section eight.
Well, people prefer section eight because it's guaranteed, like you said, a decent book.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's, and to be honest, I, I don't want, I want every family that wanna have a chance to be in University Park, enjoy our community. I have no problems with that, but it becomes a bigger problem when someone is renting and a decent house, problems at that house. Thank God for the crime-free housing.
Well, I was, I was gonna say, thank you, thank you for supporting that because it, that's the first step in accountability on landlords and tenants, knowing who's who in the community.
Correct, yeah, because when it comes to the crime-free housing and here it is, we have property and they wanna take the route of renting. I just feel that, you know, I wanna make sure that as a board, that we can come to a collective dollar amount that one, the, the, the rent, the landlord understands, hey, maybe you give them a second thought about renting out the property, or they feel that, you know what? I'm making all this money and the village is gonna get a piece of it too. So that's just, you know, me giving a perspective that you as a homeowner and the rest of the homeowners that are watching this, even in those, I wanna say over in the townhomes. You know, you have someone renting out, who care, or they bought their townhome, but then you have someone that's renting out. I mean, we gotta be fair with them too. Hey, if you're gonna come here, you're gonna rent, that landlord needs to pay the price to sit here uh, and, and rent out, you know, their, their property, the way they do, without breaking somebody's pocket, though. That's where I wanna go. I kinda wanted to be, be fair, the same way when we did the transfer stamps, be profitable about it. Also, if we can find out, I don't think uh, he mentioned what was the average price, but I guess if this is a draft, three hundred and about one twenty-five, if that's the average that say Dalton and the other towns that he's worked with is, if that's about average, I'm willing to accept what I'm seeing here. Hey, is that not, no village manager? Okay.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's about, that's about the.
We need, we'll, we need to talk about this because.
Okay, yes.
Figures they need, that's why these are examples. You'd be surprised what the charges are. And I think uh, University Park had to be put in the average mix. We not committing.
I.
Okay, we just wanna get, we wanna get our fair share and we wanna get these, and, and the banks are gonna continue to let dilapidated properties sit in our community. That's the whole goal of this accountability. Go ahead trustee Williams, go ahead trustee Williams.
Okay, I, what I wanna say, Theo, you're right. But I think that we need to be demanding to these uh, homeowners, if they are property renters or they just own the property themselves. If we make them pay when they're not doing the right thing in the neighborhood, that, you know, weeds and all of that stuff, we got to really find them. That's the only way they're gonna understand, they got to keep their property up. Then they do that.
Yes, I, I, I agree trustee Williams.
Let me just, with this in place, we have a right to do what we call priority lien. And this is something that University Park has not been doing. The property can actually ultimately for non-payment become the property of the village. The village can begin to accrue the property, create a housing authority and some other things down. But I think this would be a first step in trying to do this. Believe it or not, I, I, what trustee Brooke is saying is, is actually what has got to be, so.
And, and, and you know what, I just wanna say for the record, in my opinion, it doesn't matter whether you're a renter or a homeowner cuz we don't wanna draw this, well, you're a renter, you're a homeowner. Everybody is the same, whether you are a renter or a homeowner, everybody still pays the taxes. If you're a renter, it's, it's, it's a, and your rent. So let's treat everybody fair and equal, and that's all that counts. I don't wanna draw this line with say, well, they're a renter, this and that. We all wanna make sure that our community is taken care of, that our houses are back on the tax rolls, that we don't have boardups and dilapidated properties in the community. And I thank you, guys, for continuing our efforts and cleaning up these problems cuz it didn't happen overnight and it's not gonna get fixed overnight, but we're on the right uh, path to get these things done. Thank you for your comments, Brooks, trustee.
Listen, Mayor.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
I was just looking over the cost for the registration fees and stuff. And I see the three hundred dollars, but it says semi-annual. So would this be six hundred? Now, I'm looking at C on.
Yeah, I see, I see that too. He don't have a number page, Madam Clerk. I wanted to give you a number.
Right.
Yeah.
It's, it's about four, it's about five pages in.
Yeah, so their, their ordinance is a little different than when, how we would do it. So it is a little bit confusing. Um, if you look at the, for, just for purposes, the section that he's referring to with, or that Madam Clerk is referring to is actually, cuz they don't have page numbering. It's one, two, three, four, five, it's six pages in. It's actually um, section F. Um, it says, um, each, I'll just read the paragraph to you guys so you know what they're referring to. Each individual property under registry that has been registered for twelve months or more prior to the effective date, shall have thirty days to renew the registration and pay the non-refundable three hundred dollars. Semi, uh, non-refunded three hundred dollar semi-annual registration fee. Properties registered less than twelve months prior to the effective date, shall renew the registration every six months from the expiration of the original registration renewal and then pay, and shall pay the three hundred dollars. So it is, when I was talking about typos, it's, it is not clear one hundred percent if this is a six hundred dollars or if it's a, a three hundred dollars. Um, it does say in the previous paragraph, E, that they have to do the three hundred dollars uh, within, when they registered the properties within ten days. So the way I, but it also does say semi-annual. So I'm curious is how they're talking about, and it was just a few things like that because this is just the base that they do for everyone as a template. And just like what I was referring to with the contract, it had some things referring to Florida law and things of that nature that we would change. But the general gist of it is fine, is that we would have to make sure it's clear because what I don't wanna have happen is that you guys get asked questions about what the fees are and you're not able to give a good answer cuz I know that'll happen now as well.
Yes, and, and, and attorney Miller, Joe, I just know that you guys, well, if the board decides to move on, I'm, I'm quite sure that you guys will make sure that it's in the best interest of our, our village. So I don't have any worries about that.
Yep, we will, I promise you that.
Any other questions on, on, on this issue?
No, did, Mayor, you said someone had a problem. If someone didn't have a problem, I just wanna make sure, can I uh, uh, when we get a chance, communicate with Attorney Miller between the board meeting that we decide on that, on the, uh, well, 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 can I ask trustees, I, I mean, are we okay with the prices that everyone's seeing? Or you know what, Miss, Miss E said that we should talk more about it, about the price.
We, we, we're gonna, we're gonna do our comparables and, 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 and look and see and make, and sure that there's no statutory things involved. And then we'll do it, we can, as a home rule community, ensure that we get the best bang for our buck. Again, this is at no cost to the village, which is a good thing.
Right, right, well, can we uh, uh, we uh, move forward on it, but can we uh, if, if uh, whatever that needs to be tightened up, that if Madam Village Manager, uh, when y'all have the agenda meeting that, you know, or with, with, or with the, please that y'all can just add that, and I'm sure we'll get it. Or, you know, and we.
It'd be your drop backs, your drop box and, and, and Apple time to make a good solid decision.
There we go, there we go.
All right, because no one else has any questions, and we'll just move on. Okay, I, I don't, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Just so unclear, is the move on to move this to the regular meeting for action or for more discussion?
I would get the pleasure from the board and see, is it a straw poll? We'll say, should we move forward, trustee Jenkins?
Uh, for further discussion.
Trustee Franklin?
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to take another stab at just making sure that we um, come together and, 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 and uh, agree on what the exact fees would be. So I would say move forward for further discussion.
Fantastic, trustee uh, Williams, trustee Bolden, did Curtis ever get in, trustee McMullin?
No.
Okay, so, so attorney, so Madam Clerk, and, and from what I'm understanding and what I'm hearing is that we're gonna fine tune it a little bit and uh, maybe we'll take a straw poll before we place it on the actual agenda at the end of the month because there needs to be some.
Cuz it needs to be tweaking.
Yeah.
This your baby, right, uh, Shirley? This your.
This is my baby, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm with you guys, you know, to tweak it more before we make it fine.
Yeah, that's, that's all, let's put, that's all, that's it, put the icing on the cake. Okay, trustee, trustee Williams, trustee Sonia, Sonia, any, anything?
Uh, I think that they need to be further investigated to see where we are with this company and see if any other companies it may have the same feature for the village. I, I think we need further discussion and see where we're going with this.
All right, trustee, who, oh, that's it, trustee Williams, you, you already gave me your comment. All right, so we're gonna further discuss this. We're gonna move from item five to eight. We're gonna go to fi, item five A three. And uh, I guess this will be manager Barry Beck Fulgham. Go ahead, man, um, discussion fifty-fifty sidewalk shared project, item five three, A, A, three. Is it two different separate conversations, uh, manager Ernestine? Or, or can we do three and four together? Or basically, three, four, and five seem like they're all together.
I broke them out if I could, I broke them.
Let me quickly just say this.
Wait, wait, go, go ahead, Madam.
That's why I wanted to send you all this information. Now, guys, until the final bid comes in on September eighteenth, I ask that you not provide this to other residents because I want all the residents to be given an opportunity to come in here on the twenty-first. The first day we put this out, we had citizens calling, and it shouldn't have been. It has to go out for bid. They shouldn't have known about this yet. Uh, the only, so we're gonna wait until the eighteenth, and on the twenty-first, we'll be allowed to uh, start accepting applications. I, I provided you all a copy. I I provided you all a copy of the application. It's a very simple process. We just have to make sure they comply with provisions of motorfield tax, state laws and this and the 50/50. It's very simple, but people know it's simple. I've had comments basically saying that they're glad that this is going to be, how can I make sure that I get accepted? I said, it's going to be on first come, first served basis and the contractor is going to go out there and look at it. And the person is that's able to come up with their 50/50 share, even seniors with their 5% discount. So we're going to move move on. This is going to be an accelerated project. We're going to get it done because it'll be one contractor. We're going to have ready for him the list of contractors, uh, I mean, the list of homes. Estimate is done. When a person is approved, they get placed on the list. They bring their monies in. Bam, take him two, three days to do this. He's ready to go over to number two. We inspect at the end of it, the home homeowner with them, do a final walkthrough. We close out, they sign off, we move on. Very simple. It's a very simple, but it's a thorough and fast-moving program. If the people get their applications in, this program will, we would have had these dollars expended prior to the end of construction season, which is around the end of November, if the Lord is willing, creek done right.
Yeah, it won't. Okay, all right. Any any questions, any questions at the manager on this uh 50/50 shared project on the sidewalks?
Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
I would just like to note that the public notice of this request for proposal was published in our newspaper. It has run two times. It ran last Thursday and it ran on Sunday. I attached to the packet a copy of the newspaper article. Just so everybody will know that this is moving fast, but it's moving in compliance.
In order.
Statues and laws, okay?
Absolutely.
And on the 18th is when Miss Beck, the the.
Mm-hmm, that's when the bids will be opened up, right? No, 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 I'm sorry. I made it myself, yeah.
These are our fees.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Okay, didn't seem like there was any questions at the manager on that one. Item five, eight, four. Go ahead, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Are we moving this to the agenda on the 29th for action?
Yes, board board members?
Uh, but we should wait till that bid, the bids come in, don't you think, Mayor? And then uh.
We we got to get it out for bid.
Right, we we wait. I heard Madam Village Manager said that the bid has to come in and then that's when we go from there, right?
Yeah, I'm going to make the recommendations to you all before the 24th of, you know, you'll get it that Friday. Bid's over, so you're going to get it in your bid packet anyway. And then I'm requesting that the attorneys will do the appropriate resolution for your approval. It has to go through that process.
Yeah, so what's going to happen is that the village manager will get the, all RFPs are due on the September 18th by 5 o'clock. She'll review them and she'll probably email you kind of a summary of all of the bids with the recommendation. So really, you can move, you can have it on the agenda for the 29th if you want to to sort of selection. That's your choice, but I'm assuming and and the village manager can correct me if I'm wrong, is that she'll send you kind of a recommendation within the week of receiving those proposed RFPs on the 18th. So you'll get that from her and quite honestly, if you want to, you probably can review all of their RFPs if you want to before that next meeting. How you guys do it is up to you. That's that. That's just how typically it works.
Yep, we're going to bet it. We're going to bet it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's where it should be along this. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say that she she was going to make the recommendation. Uh, we've done it in the past with a village manager. You know, we see all three or whoever, you know, makes it and then, you know, it's right there. It's open. It's transparent, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, let's make let's make it happen, Shane. Let's go. Residents are depending on us. All right, so it looks like it's going to go on the agenda, move moving forward.
Okay, you could move to the next one?
It is item five, five. No, it's five, eight, four. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's mold remediation. Guys, we 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 have a medical problem. Uh, there there's two issues. We have the problem at fire station number two and and the mold in 698. I mean, it has become health issues in both places. As I understand, um, it's it's they they had intentions. The union, the fire union has confronted the village and they've been talking to the village about having that done. It has not been done. And the um, the fire department, the old village hall, the village hall, we couldn't move public works in there because it's unbelievable. I I I went downstairs. Make a long story short. You can't stay down there more than a couple of minutes. But anyway, I I had the uh company to come in to um to check, do a report and provide this. We got to get it done. I've asked the um, union to just hold off to see what the uh, the mayor board is going to do. We've gone through the steps. We got this and ultimately this um, this is a minority contractor. And this contractor happens to be a female minority contractor, one of the better ones in the state. And considering um, we were able to get it at this rate, we had them to come out with the fire department crew and the engineer to go to fire station number two. Fire department engineers to go to 698. And this is what we got back and and it's within the scope. So I'm asking the mayor board to give me the authority to move forward to have this mold remediation done. And this mold remediation um is going to um ward off what's pending. And that is the union wants to come at us and they've been coming at us. So this is such a major health issue and it's such a minor thing to do to stop it. Should have been done years ago. It wasn't. So we're at a point now where we have to do it or we get caught, you know, in a quagmire. So this is why I'm bringing it to the board.
Okay, questions, anybody?
Yeah, Mayor, or yeah, if we uh have we thought of just bear in mind two more, uh, and so.
You kind of you kind of you kind of breaking. You break it up, trustee.
Trustee, you're breaking up. We can't understand nothing you're saying.
You got me? You hear me?
Yeah, yeah, that now is better.
Okay.
It was.
Yes, yes. Uh, did we consider um having two more? Just in case, I know we have a minority.
Yeah, we had one done over there that John Paint had and it was, I don't want to mention on here, it was over $100,000. That John Paint had done with this other company. It was over $100,000 and then we got it. And I have it if you want to see it, but it was to be actual, which is $168,000.
Okay, and here for the record, I see $39,000.
Yeah, these these companies come from um, the United US minority contractors. This was more of a negotiated kind of thing, more so because when we saw the 168, we knew we didn't have that kind of money. So between the fire department, the engineers and myself, we were able to talk to them extensively. And they agreed to do this for this and it's under the same provisions as the others were done. I don't know them from from Adam, but they have a an outstanding record and it's a very thorough um layout in terms of what would be done, the inspection. It was done with code enforcement from both fire and um, the village. And all I can say is this is is the is it was great. This comes from here again, uh, the minority contractors. They did it. What it is, trustee, I I do believe there are some issues with finding contracts, that they're having a hard time finding contracts. They're not as lucrative in doing the COVID as it has. A lot of a lot of contractors are just not working. And there they were willing, I hate to say this, but and I'm not going to say it, but just say they they came at this because I guess 50% of something is better than 100% of nothing. But they had to comply and they had to, I had the code enforcement for both police and fire and the engineers to deal with it. The only thing I dealt with was on the end when it was time to negotiate a bottom line.
Yeah, I am. I'm also familiar with this company, just so you guys are aware, for purpose of disclosure. Um, quite honestly, it doesn't matter to me if you choose them or not choose them. Um, this was, excuse me, Ms. Wilson's company is the is the village managing, it is, they are well-known. She um, I think she calls herself the queen of green is what actually what other people call her.
Yes.
And she's got a, she's got like a masters in environmental science um, from Drexel. I just know because I've worked with her in another village and she went to college in a town where I was when I was in law school or she was actually after that because I'm a lot older than her. But um, so I have worked, I've worked a little bit with her in different areas. So I do know it to be a reputable company, so I'm getting old. I apologize.
Well, thank thank you. That's a good thing. That's a good thing.
Yeah. And I see.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So just to be clear, we got two um, two bids from her. One is the $39,000 for um, fire station number two. And then the $44,000 for um, the fire department and 698 Burnham.
Yes.
Okay.
You're right there. That was my question.
So did so did you meet with them personally, Ernestine, and talk with them and then negotiate negotiated this?
That's how we got what we did. Like I've always said, I am not too proud to be. I didn't grovel. I didn't do any grovelling, but I made it very clear to them that the village didn't have the kind of money that uh, we expected, but in that we were looking at two separate. I think that was what um, she said. This this company has such a a strong background and normally companies deal with the number of years in construction industry. Not only does she have experience, she has the background and the knowledge. Anyway, it was the two that's how we were able to win them all.
Okay, fantastic, fantastic.
Thank you.
And actually, uh, the total that I see here, it would be 84,520, final call?
Yep. For two.
For both of them, yes.
Both, yeah.
For clean air, absolutely.
Not a penny over. It's a safety issue, yes.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Trustee Franklin, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, uh, I think this is definitely something that's an urgency. That mold is not nothing to play with. And we want to make sure that we're being compassionate to our employees, so we want to make sure we get that taken care of. And not to mention, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen, so let's make something we got to make happen.
All right, so so board of trustees, do we move it? We moving this far, moving on forward, right?
Yes.
That's right.
All right, all right, item five, eight, five. Discussion acquisition purchase of four new police vehicles, two code enforcement vehicles, one fire department ambulance, two lawnmower boom truck, dump boom truck, dump truck and auger with bits for public works department.
Um, I hope you all have had an opportunity to go through it, but every department I work with every department in doing this. Two cars for building department will only purchase one until the other person, the code enforcement officer comes on board. We went in-house, we went village-wide. Now we're going to have to go outs in terms of posting with mayors and managers and the like. But we this position, we have given folk quite a few months on this. We wanted to make sure the union people and employees, balance of the village and the village itself. So now we're getting ready to go outside. We cannot find a certified um, code enforcement officer in the village.
All right.
So we're going to move out, but we're not going to buy that second car until then. But we're we got to have a replacement car. Uh, we have to give it to the um, code enforcement. It hinges a lot of, okay, sorry, but anyway.
That's no, that's that's all. All right, just want to see if the board had a a any questions regarding this.
Um, air might be recognized.
Okay, trustee Franklin, then go ahead, trustee Brooks.
I was going to ask trustee Brooks his thoughts on the uh, the police vehicles that we purchased.
Yeah, uh, I I had spoken with Wilson. One thing for sure is that based upon the reason why everyone is seeing pickups and want the residents to understand that uh, most of the Ford explorers right now are sitting too low to the ground. And it seems like a lot of the damage is becoming undercarriage damage. Also, uh, talking to officers from other departments, uh, I Ford right now is manipula- uh, they it's a monopoly. They are totally controlling the uh, the market. Yeah, and so most most departments, village managers and chiefs are asking for uh, either a um, a vehicle, something like the Crown Vic, where it's wider body, it's stable, it's made for the bouncing around. Uh, I talked to one of my very own officers in his in the undercarriage I seen under, I think it was like 16 dash one. And it was just horrible and what the cost of it is is outrageous. So when you're seeing the pickup, uh, it it was figured it to pick up style truck in which they're they are out there. Um, I would fix that this would be great to put into the fleet, considering that uh, we do truck enforcement where you can put the scales on the back. Uh, also with our streets right now in the condition until we do have it. And it's not that um, the village, this board doesn't want to do it. It's the fact that we all know that we just don't have a a close to uh, three-fourths of a million to fix one street when we have several streets. So right now, the this money, and this is the only route that I would say, trustee, that we we have to take uh, with the with the pickups. And and I and I have seen this, this seems to be more common in the South and depending on where you were in rural areas, they are moving to uh, the the pickup as a form of a squad car.
Thank you very much, trustee. I didn't have to explain it. Thank you very much.
Mad root ass, you're muted, mad root ass.
Oh, you see me talking to myself. Thank you, sir. No, and much needed equipment. Anything, any anything else? Any other questions? All right.
Oh, oh, a quick question on the two lawnmowers. Oh, oh, well, let me ask this. Madam Village Manager, I'm looking at my notes, just want to run through it. For the two lawnmowers, uh, is that go, I I know we're going to purchase, but the season is almost so up. And and was the lawnmowers that was here before, were they leased?
Uh, they were rented. They were rented.
They were rented.
Oh, my, my goodness.
But what, let me tell you, we we could, the lawnmowers are ready to be picked up. We can use them tomorrow if we wanted to. We we are ready, based on the monies that are already there and escrow, we're ready to use them tomorrow. We've ordered them. They're set because of the time span this year. Whenever the board gets ready to nod and say, okay, we can wipe it out. We can wipe and just think we will say, we're we're going to save man hours. We're going to save employees because rather than an employee going back behind, having uh, three, four people working in one area, we can have one person doing one area. It's going up into the back chute, the same person dumping on the truck. It's 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 amazing. We're really getting to, so if we were to get it soon, we can. It's, it's, it's amazing, we're really getting to, so if we were to get it soon, we can start soon. We have a lot of.
What about the, uh, for one ambulance, what is our plan of the, the other one, are we gonna tire it or, or are we gonna go to three ambulances?
No, it's pertly retired itself at this point, so it's just, it's just existing, we. Uh, let me quickly, remember me, you telling you all this story about the time when I first came in? I was talking about this town, how dare these people have this, uh, vehicle on, I was in back, the smokes were shooting back. And everything back of the truck and I couldn't see the side. So as I got ready to turn, I'm saying, why is this truck, this ambulance turning in, and it stopped? That was the village of university's park ambulance. The exhaust, it couldn't fi, it couldn't pass any kind of exam to state, you know, it became inoperable. And then they started to work on it, so what I'm going to say is this new one. With this, one of the other old one will be used to increase the monies yet we're getting in. And that, the monies that have been coming in for service is what paid for the other one. And the same as now, and we got.
Ambulance truck.
Mm-hmm.
And we got it approved within two days, because our credit went up twenty two points.
And it's gonna keep going up, so manager, manager.
Plow dump trucks, then we get, then we plow ready for that dump truck.
Oh, listen, it's gonna be the dump truck, they're gonna deliver the dump truck, because the guys we were fighting across the table wanted the diesel. Now they're making them out of gas, but you have to stay, uh, special whatever for diesel.
Yeah, diesel is more expensive than gas.
But in the long run, the diesel will be better because it's cheaper on the gas, so.
Right, I'm talking about the plow, because I know we had eight foot plows that, uh, not, not, uh, what's his name, uh? Uh, the former, one of the former directors had purchased, Mayor Rudes, you probably remember, it was like eight. But they had eight foot plows and we were just trying to do them up, uh, are, do you know, Madam Village Manager? Those plows, are we, are we, you know, would they fit on that, that size truck?
Yes.
Okay.
We've done all of that, we've done all of that, we had the man out, he sat in there, we drilled him. Every piece of additive equipment on there, we went seven routes. We went from used to clock hours to amenities, the appliances on the truck, and then we found out. To buy a used truck would be more money than to have one custom built, and that's what we did, it was cheaper.
So, manager, understand.
Yeah.
I, I want you to do one thing.
I'm done.
I want, I want you to establish a strict.
I got it.
Fleet, a fleet maintenance program with training on their new equipment. Because I'm, we're gonna get some more squad cars before this term, my term is over. But I tell you one thing, we not gonna have in my employees negligently not knowing how to work the equipment, so I would like to see a strict.
And we used to, we used to have that mayor.
Did we, okay, because we need to make sure that those squad cars tires are rotated, oil is changed when necessary. Same with the diesel fuels and the hydraulics and the lifts and on and on, so we do understand where I'm coming from.
Sure, we had great warranties under these claims.
Well, warranties are good, but we want to make sure that we do our part as well, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, well, thank you, and I've talked to them individually, and they know, I talked to the chief, we're both right here. I talked to Mr. Byther, we're right here, and we're gonna have it hiding, so we know.
That, last question, Madam Village Manager, it, this, this will come from the impact fee and it, and it has arrived?
Uh, it's coming strictly every penny from the impact fee.
And it has arrived.
It, it's touchdown trustee, it's touchdown.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for clarifying that up, thank you for letting them know.
Yes, it has, we got it.
Don't worry, don't get nervous, I don't think nothing else, I yield my time.
Trustee Bowden, don't get frustrated, I see you.
We got it, we got it.
Okay, okay.
Trustee Bowden, will you, will you make a comment?
Okay, sorry, I, I was saying, just thank you for clarifying where this is coming from. And when we first mentioned this impact fee, we had designated everything that's here now. It's what we said we were going to do with that impact fee.
And that's, and we can't do it.
All right, that's enough.
I'd like to be recognized, I just wanted to say, very good job.
Trustee Williams, go ahead.
Thank you.
Manager, very good job.
Thank you so much, thank you, appreciate it.
Just, just for the record, this impact fee can only be used in the TIF allocated area for the service and that, that thing, so. For the people who asked the questions earlier regarding, uh, human resources and this and other, that's not the kind of money that you deal with, it has. String requirements for it.
Yes, ma'am, I mean, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, we, we moving on guys? Item, this is what I'm talking about. Tw, tw, Madam Clerk?
Just so I'm clear on this, this is for all of these.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
That's it, thank you.
Item five A six discussion, oh, so, Madam Manager, can you can just do five, six and seven together, can't you?
Five, six.
Farmview Road and, uh, the town center.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, all right, all right, let's roll, let's roll with them.
Okay, well, Farmview Road, you know, one good thing about it is I don't, I. When we looked at the dollars availability, I provided information in the package, the first thing. I had to do is had to engineer to specifically lay out our options. And here were our options, but the monies didn't come in based on our options. Our number one option that we gotta do is Abbott, the number two is Amherst.
Amherst.
Amherst. Number three, uh, um, is, um, Farmview.
Farmview.
Based on the dollars we got, based on the dollars we have. We can only do Farmview this season, now we could have done half of Abbott. But the other half would have been left open. You would have had complaints about citizens getting into their driveway, and we will allow it to remain. Until the next construction season, and if you go back and look, I provided all that in packets you have. So I'm here to tell you that, uh, Farmview, if the board allowed me to move forward, can be. Started and completed this construction season of full street.
Resurfacing, and, and manager, I understand, and, and, and just in case residents are on, on the broadcast looking from Abbott or Amherst. I just want to give them why, why Farmview was the chosen one, because after evaluation. Of Abbott Lane and Amherst, it was determined that there was so much undersurface damage. That it would not just be a base, um, resurfacing, it would be, it's a completely reconstruction. Of those, of those roads, so we're gonna keep those in mind, and definitely, we're not gonna let those fall on deaf ears, we'll be working toward that for next season.
Yeah, that's our priority for next season.
But we are gonna be able to provide those streets to get done, which is a good thing. And, and trustee Jenkins, I know that you'll be extremely proud because Farmview leads right into the barn.
Now, and wait a minute, now let me tell you something, uh, that was not why this was selected. You all need to understand, sorry trustee Jenkins, that was, it had nothing to do with you, I just wanted to.
Well, I know it didn't have anything to do with her, but it's still the caveat, that's how God's favor works.
No, well, I, it's, it's not that, you know, I don't want anybody to say that that was selected. That was like number three, and so we dealt with the monies we had, and that's why we did it. So it had nothing to do with nothing, this was strictly, uh.
Trustee Bowden, trustee Bowden, and then trustee Brooks.
Oh, sorry.
Trustee Bowden?
Yeah, I just wanna, just, like I told, um, village manager earlier. Amherst was on the list to be done, and I'm not, let me make it clear, I'm not saying because that's the street I live on. And I'm with her, with you all, that the one that needs the most work, um, should be done first. See, it seemed that what, uh, Mayor Rudes just said about all the resurfacing for Abbott. However, I want to, and Theo, you have backed me up on this, back in the other administration. The Amherst was one of those along with Abbott that was supposed to be done this year. Actually, it's supposed to have been done last year, because Amherst has not been done since nineteen eighty or eighty one.
Eighty three.
And I understand what you all are saying now due, due to the funds, but at that point, the funds were there. According to the last administration, and now it's been pushed back, and I understand, I understand, you didn't know nothing about this, you weren't around. I'm just making everybody on the board aware of what was done and said to the latest administration. And why Amherst is not going to be done this year, but.
Thank you.
It had, it, I mean, I know it's on the list, it's my second or third now, and I understand why you went over to Farmview. But there may be questions coming up about that from the residents on Amherst, just FYI.
Okay, Amherst and probably Abbott, uh, trustee Brooks.
Abbott, Abbott should have been number one, but like you said, all the reconstruction that has to be done over there, I understand that.
Yeah, because that was, that was the real target on, on all of our consensus on our tours and everything else. Our, our main consensus was like Abbott, but unfortunately after the engineers had opportunity to look at it, yeah.
That's why, yeah, that's why, as I come, how, uh, Amherst got be, um, on third on the list now, but you, like you say, you did it with the engineers, you done it right. You did it with the engineers, and that was their recommendation, so that's all I can go with.
And I'm seeking other funds in addition to motorfield tax, we have to seek other funds. And there's been a lot of funds coming and whatever, but construction season, but those two, Abbott and Amherst are gonna be priorities.
Yes, and, and, and that's why we drive economic development so hard, because we understand and realize.
Absolutely.
The benefits will come over and transition into, back into the community, so it's a formula that all works, Madam Clerk, let's keep it moving, go ahead ma'am.
Okay, let me, let me do the last.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, Madam, wait a minute, Madam Clerk was there.
I had a question, I had a question.
I just wanted to note that the bid process for this project. Uh, bids will be open on Friday, September eleventh.
Nine one one, awesome, awesome. Trustee Brooks?
Yeah.
Not, not, okay, not for Farmview. No, the, what's gonna be open is the railway crossing. The governor's and railroad crossing, that's gonna be open now.
Right, oh, ju, just, just for the record, since they're talking about that, that there's gonna be major construction regarding. Around the railroad track, uh, by Governor's Highway and the metro station, that will have a completely new look. Signage, clean, fresh roads, no more potholes, no more disturbances, and that project will also be completed before November of this season as well.
November twenty eighth is, uh, uh, our deadline.
Yep, yep.
Clerk is right.
And, and thank you trustee, yeah, and trustee Williams, thank you for all your support, because I know it was your goal to ensure that we had an overpass. But right now, since that overpass is on hold and the money is short, we gonna make sure that it, uh, a clean transition over that metro.
We're gonna have to face it, we're gonna have to face.
Yep, trustee Brooks?
Yes, sir, uh, Madam Village Manager, uh, did we get the estimate cost? Of what did Amherst go up to, because it was at six hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. So what, what is it, I mean, uh, for Farmview? I mean, what, what is it, because I'm sure that the way I've been kicking numbers out. Uh, the cost is gonna have to be, you know, it's gonna be asked.
Well, we thought it was gonna be six hundred and eighty five thousand.
It's way more than that.
We went over and we brought the engineer, uh, and we drilled it, and they went under, they actually drilled. And when they realized that the cracking at the base, they, they anticipated milling down. Four inches and installing new bituminous base and all that, that wouldn't have worked. So it's gonna cost us probably in excess of eight hundred thousand dollars on actual construction. Eight hundred thousand dollars to do the construction, reconstruction, let me correct that. Reconstruction, which means that we're gonna have to create. Additional ways of persons getting in and out of their houses. While one side is done, the other side is not done, so it's a whole process. That we've got to go through to get it straight, because these folk are gonna have to, we're gonna have to come out with a method for them. To, they may not be able to, uh, go in their, uh, garages, they may have to park on the other side of the streets. We've discussed it thoroughly, so the engineers are trying to come up with a comprehensive plan for that. And the citizens in that area are gonna have to be a part of that discussion. They need to know that we're gonna do this, but what inconveniences they're gonna be to them, and we don't want.
And the cost of Farmview, what is, what is, what is it, and how far Farmview is gonna go around, how far the construction?
It's the whole street.
Is it, is it gonna go past the power lines that everyone is complaining about?
It's gonna go, in fact, it's all inclusive in the, in the blurb that I gave you, it's gonna go. From, um, from Blackhawk going west, I mean, going east.
East.
All the way past to the point of where, uh, Regal Farm is and curves around, so it will, it'll. I don't know exactly if it's going to, we're gonna find out, that's why the engineers is gonna have to do the estimate. He's gonna do the drawings, that's why I was asking you all, uh, for him to do the drawings, because he is gonna make that recommendation.
Because the, the, uh, actually, and trustee Bowden, you, you know, uh, like I know that street. And the reason why we're saying is that, uh, in a, I'm questioned, because Farmview is pretty long. And it does come around, am I right, is that Abbott or Amherst, it does come around.
Comes down.
Yeah, so that's what I was wondering, is it gonna go from Amherst all the way around the Blackhawk, is that, and what was that cost? Compared just doing Amherst?
That's what he's gonna do it, he's gonna let us know, and then of course, I couldn't publicly tell you what the cost, because if we put it out.
It's gonna be like a bid.
And then they're gonna know, so he's.
Oh, they gotta go out to bid, oh.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to just beat around the bush, but, uh, I guarantee you, when this is done, when he finishes this estimate. He's gonna have how many lineal feet, yards, from what point to what point, based on the money we have. So I'm making sure, it goes in everybody's box.
And, and this money comes from, uh, which fund is it, is it gonna, because the MFT.
Motorfield tax.
Right, the MFT, the last one I believe was, uh, just a little over one fifty, am I correct? It should be just dumped by now.
Yes, yes, it's about two fifty eight, two sixty, and trustee, you know, I don't wanna say.
Right, 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 okay, I just wanna make sure that when we start talking about this, because. Everyone is anticip, trustee Bowden is anticipating it, and I'm gonna be honest, uh. I, I would rather sacrifice, uh, Farmview. Considering the, the torture that trustee Bowden and all those, uh, north of Farmview been going through, so. I mean, it is such a priority, because they have suffered a lot with their car.
Let me ask you all this, now, if we were to use these few dollars, you know, these dollars. Would barely touch a fourth of a fourth in terms of what we had to do on, um, on.
Abbott.
Abbott.
And the thing about it is you have to use motorfield tax within the year that you awarded, so we gotta use it. We have to submit the reports to the state, and our time is running out with it, and, and we were cut, understand, we were cut. I'm just trying to use what we've got to do it, to use it up, so. We can show them that we needed it, we used it, so when we submit these reports, we can move on, so that's, just keep that in mind.
Okay, trustee Bowden?
One more question, okay, so Abbott, if, if, if we're at eight hundred thousand possibly estimate for Amherst. Then Abbott's got to be way over that, right?
Well, I'm gonna tell you what it is, and I'm not telling you. Yes, we can talk tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, because you all want to, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I know it got to be astronomical, and we don't have it, okay.
We'll, we'll talk tomorrow, trustee.
You don't want to blow all the fog from your background in San Francisco.
You're correct, I'm done.
Now, now, the final thing is.
No, one more thing.
The repairs on town center, we got an estimate. What the cost of the, uh, construction would be on the town center. If we were to put it out and what the union. If we were to put it out and what the union hourly wage would be, what they provided us with that. Now, and I mentioned to the mayor board, we didn't have the money. So here again, we're in a super condition. We had those uh, estimates, provisions and specs. We provided them to um, here again, the very same sets of contractors. And they came back with a bid for it. They got together, all of the contractors in the entity came back together. And I think I provided you that cost in your bid package without mentioning what it is.
Yes.
It's the, it's the same provision. They will have the AIA inspection. They will have, nothing is different, but that's what they're going to do. They came together with a particular contractor and this is what they were able to do it for. We'll be able to do from A to B to L to Z, the entire. With the four inch grinding, the inclusion of the base, the entire thing for that amount in, in that bid. Everything. Everything. I don't know these contracts from Adam. I don't care. But the point is, they have bid bond of which uh, we have, we have a bid bond, all of that to guarantee their work. Once they submit their licensing, bid bond, W N I's do a AIA standard uh, invoicing. They're under the provisions of the law. They have to comply. Once they sign off and do, they were given full disclosure. We provided it to them. That's what they submitted it for. So it is what it is. And you all, I give you everything, including a copy of the check for their drive, I mean, their uh, license.
Trustee Brooks.
Yeah, uh, uh, Madam Village Manager, uh, uh, I just got a question. Where does this leaves one hundred Town Center with those guys in the contract agreement to do uh, their part of the parking lot? Because they did a presentation.
Yeah, it's either black and white.
Yeah, they, they did it and, and, and I mean, I, I think this would change things. They gave a great presentation, but I, I would say.
They're gonna do their little parking area. That's not gonna affect this. They're still doing their parking area.
So, so, so.
What area is this?
You know, they.
No, go, go ahead.
They, they never said that they're gonna do the entire parking lot.
No.
No.
May I be recognized?
What's?
May I be recognized?
Just a second, Trustee. Just a second, Trustee. Just, 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 just a second, Trustee.
Contract that they're, they're gonna pay the area that serves their business.
Grocery store.
One hundred, yeah, only about, right, one hundred.
We always knew. That's right. So we, and they, they're gonna ask though, but we also knew that we had to do the bounty. That's the only area this bid does not include. The only, we got some schematics on it.
Because it's in black and white.
Do we cut it? I mean, do we, are we cutting? I, 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 the bid I seen was for the whole parking lot. So that's my, that's my fault.
May I be recognized?
He said their parking lot.
It's a second, Trustee. I got you.
Not the entire Town Center. They never agreed to the entire Town.
Right.
No, I'm, I'm lost. I'm lost.
You let me be recognized, I can tell you.
Give, give me a second, Trustee. Give me a sec. Let him finish his dialogue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, are you, are you, the list, list getting it out? Let me just hear for a second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Williams.
Uh, all I wanna say is I do remember this conversation when they were there. They said that they were only gonna do what's in front of their store.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Quote, unquote, period.
You're right.
I remember asking them, you gonna do the whole thing? They said, no, we gonna do in front of our store.
Yeah, just like, well, like the grocery store, what's related to the grocery store, basically. You're right, Trustee Williams. And sorry, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
And also included in that was behind, in the driveway, behind their building. But they never said that they would do the entire, I remember the question. And their answer said it was something that they could look at, but they were only doing, I would.
They were, right, because they were only committed to a certain part.
In front of their store and so that their vehicles could get in and out of the back. They would pop, you know, patch that.
And yes, I remember that also.
Right.
So, so, yeah, so Madam Village Manager, I would just wanted, like, what, what area, I'm just, that we're gonna put this, this amount? I, I mean, you know, what area?
We're gonna do every area minus that area on the, in the actual Town Center, all the way up to Exchange. You know, the, where all that asphalt in is dug up, all the way um, uh, west to the border of the parking lot. All the way east, they're even going to stripe and put in the new parking. They're going to stripe. And when we went back to the, I went back to the same well again, Trustee. I know they're tired of me, but I went back to the US minority contractors again. And they, it took them a while to do this. I didn't wanna say anything until they in fact were able to come up with something. And we just got, that's why I was so happy and provided it to you. And if it's done, this will be a clue for this to happen, for you all to have this done. With the window changes with this, I'm trying to get some Will County C D B G dollars to do the facade. And then we'll deal with the rehab. I'm trying to get the external done that people are constantly complaining about. And that the village has been saying that they were gonna do for years. So I'm trying to do this to get you all to have it done. So I went back to the, and then it comes back again.
So when someone pulls into Town Center, you got the mayor's office in front of there, that, they're gonna do that part. So when they, and also, if you turn and go all the way around our Town Center, we're gonna slice it down like when like. Excuse me, ninety Town Centers at, and come back all the way up to like where the mayor's office at? That, 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 that's the air.
Okay, let me tell you. This is how, there's going to be like a rectangular piece, but in there, they're from the same organization. It will not show the separation. That was one concern that I had. They're from the same organization, so it, it will be continual. But we're not gonna pay for that little area. It's not little, it's fairly a decent square footage area. Cuz I have the schematic drawings of exactly what they're gonna do. But now um, uh, the organization, um, what's the, uh, Al, Al's Bezir, the water distribution, distribution, whatever. Is going to do X number of feet out of there. But the balance of the parking lot, Trustee, I will tell you, yes, they are doing it and they're striping it. And I have, that's why I wanted to make sure you all got the docs. They're doing.
What about the back? What if?
No, we, uh, no, no, I, I had to get what I could with the money I had. We.
What about? What about the interest on the uh, uh, west side of the parking lot? They gonna do that one too? The mayor's side and the west side?
Okay, it, I, I, okay, I've been talking about that. They agreed to do the parking lot. I got them to do the parking lot. Let us see, if I can get them to do the parking lot. Then we get some more money and try to do that because those streets.
Can I be honest? I'm, I'm just gonna, let's, let's be honest. We might as well do the whole parking lot. The, the agreement that we had with the storefront, that was before this even came. But uh, the fill one hundred potholes is nothing. If you look at the contract, Madam Clerk, if I'm not mistaken, we said one hundred pothole, up to one hundred potholes. That's why they said, we'll think about it. And to fill up one hundred potholes really is nothing. And we really know if we're gonna go ahead and, and make the Town Center right, you know, it, it just, you might as well do it all.
So you're telling me to go sit back with them to see what they can do to part of this contract and make it a smooth transition? To it, so they can maybe get the streets done on the outside and we do the inside. Is that what I hear you saying, Trustee?
Yeah, uh, right, because I mean, there's no need of them doing uh, one hundred potholes in front. Cuz that's what the contract said. Am I right, uh, Mr. Mayor? We, 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 we said one hundred.
Well, there, there are no, there are no, there are no more potholes in the Town Center right now.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's, it's no need, it's no need to even bringing them up anymore because we basically took care of that.
Well, I, I, I don't know if their intention.
I'll talk to my, to see if we can get them to compromise so they can.
Yeah, they gonna do it.
The entry streets on the side and we do the parking lot and we have an entire sky.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if they wanna, if they, I don't think it's any potholes in the back. But I think when we did that agreement, you know, that was just trying to get our storefront looking better. But if, you know, since we gone ahead and done this, I'm just saying, make it all uniform and look at beautiful, you know, look beautiful instead of. Look, making it look, you know, seventy-five percent done, if you know what I mean. But, but I'm, I'm, I'm hearing. I, I mean.
All the way up.
Yeah, yeah, just make it better. Be, I mean, and, and maybe we'll ask them, is there something different they can do? Like maybe if it's potholes in the back or if it's something, cuz they said they were gonna try to beautify it as much as possible. Uh, so maybe it's something else they can do such as landscaping, take the money and put it to landscaping or something.
Okay, alright, I'll talk to them.
So Theo, Theo, Trustee Brooks, who are you talking about? The people that's at the gro- grocery store?
Yeah, because the, the potholes, the potholes we were trying to get within the agreement, I seen one hundred. Potholes, up to, up to one hundred potholes being filled. But if Madam Village Manager is saying that, you know, everything else is gonna be surfaced, I'm just saying that. Why not make everything uniform? Because the residents don't, they probably don't ride by like everything is done except that one little spot in front of this grocery store.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we might as well make everything uniform. It would make sense.
Uniform.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and ask them to divert that money.
If she's able to do that.
Yep, now, all I can do is.
Listen, closed mouths don't get fed. Knock on that door.
That's all I can do. Okay.
Yeah, that's it. We just, I mean, we, I mean, I mean, I'm sure it really have benefit them because the place will look better. We're just saying, hey, you don't have to do potholes no more because we done already did it unless you wanna donate whatever you wanna do for.
Okay, I, I hear you, Trustee, loud and clear. I hear you.
Donate, you know, whatever, yeah, you know, donate the money to Tootsie Boys or something.
And, 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 and just, and just for the record, the Town Center will probably be seventy percent occupied before Christmas. Cuz there're gonna be some three leases that's gonna be coming to the board very soon.
Let's hope so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
How you still my time, Mayor?
Alright, anybody else? Last but not least, Fire Station Two renovation.
Okay, uh, okay, guys, the monies in the um, that's under the impact fee is where Fire Station Number Two. That may be the location um, that we're gonna have to rehab. But let me tell you, there is a company we're looking at. And um, as long as probably no more than two elected officials would be involved with us. Uh, the mayor and another or two trustees, however mayor you all decided to do it. There's a company that builds uh, that builds uh, fire stations. They've done it for Tenley Park. They do it all along. And then they give the municipality a lease with an option to buy.
To buy it back over.
It's like buying a home on a contract. And we could, we could do that where we could pay them a monthly, they could build it to the villagers' specifications. And they will um, charge us X number of dollars every month. We can do the arrangement where a majority percentage of those dollars go on the actual um, contract for purchase of the facility. Uh, the number of years is something we can talk about. That's how these other towns have been doing it. They've never shared with anybody. Well, we got, got inside and figured out how they were doing it. So we'll say, okay, which means that if that is done, then we then will take that Fire Station Number Two. And allow Public Works or if not Public Works, it could be shared with Public Works and/or Police, whatever the case may be. But it could either be a facility for Public Works or part Public Works, part Police, whatever. That's something down the line, but we got the money right now. So we can either use the money to start for the acquisition and the initial contractual for the construction of a new Fire Station. That will be.
Public safety building.
Clo- public safety building that Mayor, you keep saying that.
Because I gotta, I gotta have police and fire on both the side. The fire department is a great department, but they're not the elitist. We gotta have protection on both sides of the street.
We, we talked about these dollars and how these people did it, so we can further talk. I understand what you're saying. But we, we gotta work that out. But bottom line is, um, bottom line is, we gotta have some impact that deals right over there on Central. And that newly, whatever, cuz if you notice, a lot of, of businesses are moving from and migrating closer to I fifty-seven. And so we wanna target, but just keep this, it's Fire Station Two rehab. Meaning that Fire Station Two opted to use their monies for rehab, whether they stay there or it's shared.
It's our building.
It's our building. Rehab, cuz it's now.
Well, uh, but Madam Village Manager, um. Now, will this facility that we, is they, are they gonna build a new facility or they wanna renovate this?
Okay.
I wanna get it out of, out of, wanna build or they wanna?
Okay, right now, the dollars that's earmarked for the budget part of the Fire Department. Can be used to rehab Fire Station Two. If we use it to rehab Fire Station Two, even if the Fire Department is able to relocate. Through other sources funding, and that's what we're looking at now. We can still use that facility as a public building, either for Public Works or, or otherwise. Bottom line is, it would be occupied, brought up to codes. Right now, it's not up to codes. We need to bring it up to codes. Whether they stay there or they leave, or it's occupied by Public Works or otherwise.
So I didn't miss that. They, they, they're gonna renovate it so that our firefighters can be there.
Well, they're there. What is, okay, we, right now, there's some OSHA violations.
Correct. That place is horrible. I, I, I mean, I've been there. I just, I, I just wanna get the understanding of. Because I know.
We got to renovate it until we get the fundings and de- and determine how we're gonna deal with this other facility. But right now, we gotta renovate it in order for the station to be there to serve the area.
Okay, so.
We don't have to.
So, so they are gonna stay there. I just wanna get, so point of the, firefighters are gonna stay there for now. This, this, this business that, that you're talking to, their purpose is to rehab or build another facility?
The new place? The place, no, we're talking about.
The company, the company, the company.
New, new Public Works facility, new building, according to our specs, new building.
The company, I mean, the company that you spoke about, you said there's a company that's out there, they do bill, it's like a lease to.
Like buying your home on a payment plan.
Rent.
Right. So you're saying that you're talking to them, but meanwhile, you letting the board know that we need to renovate the town, renovate Fire Station Two?
You got it.
Correct.
Okay. Do, have we gotten the F?
Pardon?
You froze, Trustee. Brooks, Brooks is frozen right now.
I froze, I froze. Am I back yet? Okay, yeah, uh, did we, did we get the cost?
Yes.
To renovate, to renovate. To renovate, to renovate.
Absolutely, of course, trustee, yes.
Yeah, so, what, when they do the renovation, is it, it like the mayor said, is it, is it, are they gonna make it plausible? Where patrol would be able to be out there?
They got to, Brooks, we got it, we can't have it no other way.
Because, one, one point I wanna make, uh, and, and you know, this is what I wanna talk to the board. Is that, uh, madam village manager, uh, uh, the option that she said, I do like it. One thing that's very important is that, and, and mayor, uh, you, you probably reckon, I think we talked about this through through, uh, when, when we first got in the importance, uh, this was even before Amazon even came this way. We knew, or that was more of a vision, that we can't, and it's actually, it can be done with the TIF, is that we build a new station, and it has a firehouse, and it has a D P W out there. Because it does have to facilitate that area out there. Because, to be honest, I think one thing, and tell me if I'm correct, uh, Ms. E. We do control that, that, that basically the interstate going out there, fire rescue goes out.
Ev- everything, that's our responsibility.
Right, it belongs to U P, so, you know, maybe, I don't know, madam village manager, if I'm jumping too far ahead. But, you know, I kinda, I know we have two years before anything happens in that building over there. But, you know, as far as the trustees, I just kinda wanna throw it out there, that I did have that discussion with the mayor, and I think I might have had it with you, Ms. E, that we talked about what the, you know, what we can use and what are options. But as far as the station house itself, I will agree with madam village manager. When I came to the police and fire commission in twenty fourteen, I think it was about fourteen when I became the chair. I took a trip out there, oh my god, I mean, I, I don't even know how they sleeping in there, so we gotta do something ASAP, and that was a point that I had made, we, we gotta do something ASAP, but the, if the options gotta be, you know, I just wanna, I wanna throw the options out there of what we can do, because we are controlling the TIF area, and if I'm not mistaken, D P W has been working very, I think this past winter, they was busting.
He froze again.
Trustee Williams, Liz. Oh, okay, yeah, he doing, yeah, he doing the freeze.
It sounds like a dance.
Trustee Williams, I'd like to have my motion to dismiss.
Okay, is, is trustee Brooks, is he, he's frozen, is there any other questions then? Trustee Brooks, you there? Trustee Williams made a mo- trustee Williams made a motion for adjournment. Ma- madam clerk, I see how.
Yeah, are we?
Are you moving it?
Yes, moving forward.
Okay.
Man, trustee Williams, can I hear you again?
A motion to dismiss.
Is, there's a motion for adjournment, a motion for adjournment by trustee Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Bale Jenkins, all in favor? Trustees, trustee Shirley, you had a question?
No, I'm done.
All, all opposed?
It's just like it ended so abruptly.
Did I leave?
Yeah.
Am I back?
You're back.
Good night to everybody.
Good night.